It's Monday, June 8th at 7:00 PM. And tonight we're in committee meeting with two of our committees reporting on several topics. The first of which is the Transportation Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Kotzis, and also members Crowell and Claude Felter are on that committee. Thank you.
President, nicely, thank you. And this evening, we have, we have three bullet points tonight, and I will, I'll get right into them. The first one is the, the additional conversations that have been happening about the outdoor extended space in public right-of-ways, specifically, I believe, in our Uptown area. You know, I have not been participating in the, in the conversation, but I know that, that many people have, along with the Chamber, Athens County Chamber of Commerce. And tonight, we have the City Planner, Paul Logue, along with the Assistant Safety Service Director, Andrew Chicky, also here to add insight to where the conversation is at this point. So, so, thank you.
Is it my turn then? Member Kotzis?
Yes, it is. Please, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
No, no problem. Good evening, good evening, City Council. Transportation Committee members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this evening. Andrew Chicky as well is on this call, and he can, he may fill in a few blanks for me. Just a little bit of background, I believe all the members of the Council should have copies of the draft ordinance that we've been working on, at least Transportation Committee members should have that. And we've been working on this for a few weeks now, myself and Andrew. I know Sarah Grace participated in a call, and Beth, Beth Claude Felter also participated in a call, and maybe a few others, I don't, but admittedly, I don't recall. We've been working very closely with the members of the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce, and specifically with the Athens Uptown Business Association. They came forward with some requests, as Council is aware, about finding, finding new methods to try to be able to serve customers uptown. As, as we know, there are a lot of rules and regulations in place right now for out, indoor dining at restaurants around the state of Ohio, based on, in light of the COVID-19 pandemic requirements that the state is enforcing at this time. We've been looking at some best practices and trying to find ways to help them to have, be able to serve customers, but also in a, in a way that customers are willing to participate in. And one of the things that we've been knowing through studies is that a lot of people at this point, around the country, do not feel comfortable eating inside restaurants. However, people are feeling a lot more comfortable being outdoors. And so, we've, we've had conversations about better ways to do that, and I do have, if I can figure this out, a quick, I'm going to share my screen. I did a very brief PowerPoint presentation, a summary of the information that you all have, and then just some ideas to help better understand what we're looking at. Let me see here. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Great, okay. So, like I said, we've been working on this for a few, for over a month now, I believe. The ordinance that, the legislation that you have in your possession right now, there's several purposes and goals from it. The first is that we wanted to establish clear guidelines for the approval and installation of temporary sidewalk extensions that should be used for the general public at appropriate locations within the public rights of ways. And we're specifically looking at Uptown Athens for this project. We also wanted to rethink Athens' street use and try to envision creative ways to interact with the public within our city rights of way, promote economic vitality, and support our local businesses. We wanted to encourage walking and biking, and we wanted to promote public spaces for arts and culture. Now, the reason that we're moving forward with this right now is, in some ways, it does feel a little bit more urgent to do so now in order to help support our Uptown business owners. However, this type of a strategy was recommended in the Athens Uptown Active Transportation Plan that we completed in 2018. It is a best practice, and it's relatively common now in communities around the US and around the globe, especially in warm weather, to provide such amenities in their, in public rights of way. And it's a, it's a really good way to try to get, to create more open space and more space in an area where there's very little of that. So, this is a really great opportunity for us to, to move forward with this. The legislation that you have, the draft legislation, just a little bit of the details about it. For purposes of this legislation, Andrew Chicky did a lot of the, a lot of legwork here to put this all together, and his, his efforts for this should not go unnoted. But we divided Uptown into 10 different zones, and within each zone, there are parking spaces. And Andrew did a pretty much a space-by-space evaluation of all of the parking. We considered places where, and the, the information I'm about to show you, anything that's green would be potentially eligible for a permit. Anything that's red is non-eligible. That might be a parking buffer, or have a taxi stand, or have motorcycle parking. Purple areas are business loading and unloading. We have bus stops for Athens Transit Uptown, and they need areas to, to pick up their customers. And then there's also, of course, no parking zones. There's several of those uptown. And then there's curb cuts where we, vehicles can access alleys and et cetera. For purposes of this legislation, within those 10 zones, we designated that each zone could have a maximum number of permits available based on 75% of permit-eligible spaces, or a maximum of four locations in each zone. Uptown businesses can apply for and receive up to two spaces. And the city would offset the loss of on-street parking and by adding 34 spaces at the secure lot, which can be accessed from College Street. That's the lot behind the Shiny Diner, as most of us know it. And then we, we designated that the, the season for doing this, at least in the short run, would be our traditional summer months, May 1st through August 31st. Typically commencement at Ohio University is the first Saturday in May, so it's typically right around May 1st. And usually, school begins again in the fall semester in the last weekend in August. So, we thought that was a reasonable opportunity for us to propose this. There would be, of course, is a permitted process. And so, in order to determine what would be a reasonable cost for such a permit, we looked at what is the cost for each one of those metered spaces? And if it was occupied for a full 11 hours of, for meter enforcement at $0.75 per hour, that would come out to $8.25 per day.
So, related to, to that, we understand that the overall value of this, we needed to estimate the value of the space, but not necessarily the, the cost that would go on to business owners in the Uptown area, knowing that if an individual or a business were to use the space or rent the space beginning in the 1st of May through the end of August, that there would be a substantial cost there. At the same time, there is an offset to the city as far as reutilizing that space in a different way. So, what you'll see in the legislation will be, I want to call it a happy median, but it is a compromise median in order to offset some of the cost of, or value of that space, at the same time, knowing that this is meant to be an economic boost for the Uptown businesses. We also, when we were looking at how to go about doing something in the Uptown area, it was, we could have done something short-term and figured out some sort of patch solution. But when we're thinking about envisioning what the future of Athens looks like, this is a great opportunity to create something that would be more long-term, that could kind of become part of the fabric of the Uptown area. So, the hope is, if this is successful, that this is something that we can sustain long-term and can become a draw during the summer months. And what we've heard from the Uptown Business Association is that drop-off when students leave, and we want to bring in more business into the, into Athens, this is a way to do that. And outside of just the Uptown area, a draw as people are visiting to check out.
Okay. So, this is, this will, this may be hard for everybody to see. This is kind of a rundown of how, of those different colored parking spaces that I, that I mentioned on that first slide. This is looking at North Court Street. I believe this is from Carpenter to State. And Andrew, please correct me if I'm wrong about that.
That is correct.
Okay. And so, any of these, the green parking spaces that you see here would be eligible for, or potentially eligible to have one of these installations there. Any of the yellow sections, the red sections, or the, those purple sections would be ineligible for it for a host of reasons, whether they're loading and unloading zones, alleys, curb cuts for parking areas or for the alleys, or some, or parking that's used for another, spaces that are used for another reason. Another one here, again, we, Andrew broke these down into 10 different zones. I'm just using two of the zones as an example. This is also, this is West State Street. And you can see the green areas would be potentially eligible for one of these installations. All of these purple ones are business loading zones, and so they would be ineligible. Same with the red or the blue. This is, the, this blue area is a ADA parking space. And so, of course, those, those would not be eligible for this either. And then just so everybody understands the, kind of the concept of how we, how these could look, but also of the way they could actually improve the aesthetics of Uptown Athens and make it kind of a more interesting and vibrant space. Here's just a few, a few images I've taken of some I've seen. You can see that this is, there's a dining area there, and you can see some people sitting towards the, towards the rear of that photo, but also that there's some green space that's being created in an area that otherwise doesn't have a lot, at least on that block. This next one here, pretty simple, actually, if you look at that. It's, it's lumber that you can buy relative, for relative low, low cost at local hardware suppliers. Looks like that's some astroturf there to make it feel a little bit more green and comfortable. And then some, some nice planters in the rear there to give it a buffer from the road, but also to make it just a little bit more attractive. You can also see there in the, in the, in the background that there's on-street parking for bicycles right next to that, which is another thing that a lot of communities have done when they're installing these parklets. The on-street bike parking is a good way to create that buffer space to protect the area from vehicles, but also to add, and another amenity for people and encourage people to ride their bikes uptown. And then the last image here, I liked this one because it shows what you can do when you're on a grade. There's a slight downhill slope there, and you can see how, from the curb to the, the road, how that slopes back. So, it has, it has level access on the road. You can see that there's some shims in there to balance it out. And then it's also well-protected from the road and has seating for at least eight people in there. So, again, not, this type of a project, in some areas of Uptown Athens, when Andrew and I, we, we walked around and measured it out, we believe that if social distancing rules are being implemented, and you've got tables set up at six feet apart, and it's separated from, there's some slight separation from the sidewalk there, you can have anywhere from four to, four, five, or six tables placed in one of these areas, creating a lot of space for, for Uptown business owners who have very limited space right now. As many of us know, some of the, some of the shops uptown have very, are very narrow buildings, already had very limited seating uptown, and so, or in their, in their dining area. And with the requirements for the number of people that can be in the building, as well as six feet of separation, even further limiting their options. So, we can, there is an opportunity to create additional dining space that we think can support the Uptown businesses. And the, from all the conversations we've been having with the Chamber of Commerce and the Uptown Business Association members, many of them are interested in doing this. We did do survey work. We, we received feedback from, I believe, 24 Uptown businesses. The biggest concern that we heard, we did ask a few different questions from them. This, this strategy was very well-supported. We didn't get much feedback saying that they thought it was going to be a negative for their business or a negative to Uptown. What people liked about it was that it did keep streets open, at least from the business standpoint. We, I know there's been conversations that, or I've, I've heard from people who've said, are we going to close down Court Street, or can we close down Court Street to make it a, a more, into a pedestrian, pedestrian way? A lot of the business owners specifically expressed concern about that, that that would actually have a negative impact on their business, as you can imagine. And we can all acknowledge that we do need parking uptown. Vehicles do need to get through uptown. A lot of people are, of course, because of where we live within our community, will be driving uptown if they want to go uptown. Topography and distance, of course, are tough to overcome. And so, we didn't want to take a first step and say, let's start closing down streets. We didn't think that would be an appropriate measure for the short run. But we did think, since we already had parklets as an identified goal of the city and something that, that is a best practice, that this would be a great opportunity for us to start looking at that. And the business owners that we talked with and from, through the chamber also thought this was a viable option for them. Thank you. That's all, I believe that is all on my presentation. That's correct.
I would just like to say, as I mentioned in one of those meetings, that I think this summer is the absolute perfect time to do this because so many of the businesses are suffering, and customers want to be safer by sitting outdoors. So, if we could just get that started this summer, that would make things much better for the businesses. And then in the future, when the coronavirus is gone, it might attract people from other towns to come in, to, to come into uptown. And it could make our city much more of a, a more, more, excuse me, make us a much more of an attractive space to come into in the summertime, and would help our economy. So, I'm all in favor of this.
Member Crowell.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. Thank you, Mr. Chicky and Mr. Logue, for your work on this. I also am supportive. I wanted to share that I have had some conversations with restaurant owners as well. And, and I did hear some of the feedback that, that you commented on, Mr. Logue. And that is that for some restaurants that don't have any outdoor seating, but also highly value their parking spaces because they are doing a pretty good business with takeout. So, they were asking me about whether there could be places where tables could be set up, where customers could come and pick up their takeout food, and then go to the tables to eat the food instead of having to go home. So, they were asking those questions about, you know, possibility of closing down streets at times and having tables, et cetera. You know, we got into the weeds a little bit about how that would work in terms of being able to be served alcohol as part of their meal. I assume, Mr. Logue, that for these parklets, there would be some proximity to the locate, to the, to the restaurant. They would have to be maybe within a certain amount of feet of the front door or something? Because I'm assuming that alcohol would be included in the services that would be available at these outdoor seating. Can you answer that question?
From my perspective, Member Crowell, I don't believe alcohol would be permitted outside of their building. I'm not sure, unless there's been some changes to the, to Ohio Liquor Control's permitting process. There are, there are processes that communities can go through in order to allow for alcohol to be purchased within an establishment and then taken out into the public right-of-way. We have not done that in Athens that I'm aware of. I know that there are, I know, I've seen some, Lancaster, I believe, has done it or is doing it. And I've seen some articles about neighborhoods within some of the bigger cities where they're, where they're looking for that. That's a, serving alcohol in the public right-of-way, I think that is a discussion that if, if Council wanted to have it, I would, they, by all means, they should have that. I, I don't have a position on that in either way. A few things we have discussed about, especially about just having, we did talk about, you know, is there a place we could just set up some chairs and allow people to sit? And then we, it kind of gets into this, well, who's going to maintain those? Who's going to, who's going to clean and sanitize them? What kind of, you know, what are we going to do without restroom facilities? Who's going to be responsible for that? So, we never had, we, we didn't really come up with a reasonable answer to that. The closest I think we got, and one that I don't think is a bad idea, would be if, if there's an opportunity to expand this for, for people who want to get carry-out, is to possibly work with the university to see if they could encourage pack-in, pack-out picnics up on College Green. If family or a couple or somebody wants to go uptown and take a blanket or a camping chair, pick up food to go, and then go sit up on College Green, take their, take all their trash with them, take their, take all their stuff with them, and go, and then put that in their car or in their backpack. That's one way we think we could address that in a, in a sanitary situation, and also provide that space. There are a few other, you know, that I could, I could think of. Of course, the Armory Park might be an opportunity for that, as well as the old Howard, Howard Hall site at Union and College. But doing it on the, on the public right-of-way, closing down the streets with, with, the, the bricks can be a trip hazard, of course, they're uneven. Setting up tables and then having wobbly, unable to shim the bottoms of them to keep them balanced. We just didn't have any good answers for that. And so, at least in the short run, we didn't think that was an appropriate strategy to move forward with. Perhaps that is something to discuss. We can, we can begin deploying this, this strategy, and then seeing if we can move forward with other ones, if needed, or as needed.
Okay, just to follow up on that real quick. Yeah, I appreciate that you having considered that as well, because those, those questions are out there.
Yeah, of course.
Questions connected to that is, if we're not having Boogie on the Bricks, if we're not having Brew Week, could there be weekends where, where? And I realize those are basically privately, you know, run, run events, right? But the city has worked with those, lead, those organizers to shut down the streets and allow alcohol or tables to be put up in those areas. And I'm wondering if we could have, at least on a couple of weekends, sort of promote Athens restaurants, promote Athens businesses, come on down in Court Street? I mean, everybody loves having dinner, you know? It raises a lot of money for the Bounty on the Bricks, you know, things like that. Come and get your dinner, come sit out at the table, and, 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 you know, pass the necessary ordinances to allow, you know, alcohol to be consumed in the streets for those select hours.
I know when I participated in a, in a meeting with the Uptown business owners, somebody proposed allowing open container alcohol if people were going to be eating outside. And I suspect everybody had the same mental image that I did of someone, you know, elegantly sipping wine with their meal. But then somebody said, but yeah, the bars could do that too. And there could be students all over the sidewalk, you know, guzzling beer. And that might change the atmosphere quite a bit. I also wonder, just while, while I'm speaking, you can address this later if you want. It's a slight change of subject. But are we only talking about this for Uptown Athens? Or could a restaurant like Louis Louis, or Soul, or some other restaurant that is not on, in the Court Street vicinity, ask to do the same thing and get a green light for it?
We, we were looking at this specifically for, for Uptown Athens, for the, the streets that are primarily considered Uptown Athens, Congress, or excuse me, Court Street, State Street, Union Street, Washington, and I believe Carpenter Street. Was that correct, Andrew? Did we include Carpenter?
I don't know that we did include Carpenter.
We can provide a, we can provide the full map to the, to the members, of course. To, to your question about other locations around town, Member Claude Felter, David Riggs, our co-director, he has been looking at that with, around the community. We, we think that's actually, there's, that's an easier problem to solve because most of those places have parking, off-street parking lots. And so, if they, as long as the city's okay with it, they might, we might need some flexibility with parking requirements. But if they wanted to cordon off five or six parking spaces, you can create a lot of real estate by doing that, of course. Parking is a, is a very big land use, we all know that. So, that they could create outdoor dining situations, putting tables and chairs and umbrellas out. Because that's private property, they may be able to serve alcohol outside. Again, I'm really not sure on how those, how liquor permits work, specifically on those regulations. I know David, when he, we basically said, we'll take care. We, we kind of split the work, and he said, I'll, I'll start talking about, I'll figure out how to do it in the areas where they have parking areas that could be converted. And then Andrew and I would take, take, try to solve the uptown issue because they were, we looked at them as being distinctly different and needing different solutions. I know that there is interest from what David Riggs told me from some of the business owners. He talked about, I believe some of them may actually already be setting up some, some of that because they had an abundance of parking, but I'm not, I haven't been driving around much, to be perfectly honest. So, I haven't looked around to see what people are doing.
Yeah, a member Smedley, and I, and I'll take, at some point, I'll have a comment. This conversation took off pretty quick, so, but I'll let other people talk for a while.
Sorry. Thank you, Member Kotzis, and thanks for your hard work, everybody for getting this together. This sounds like a really great project, will really energize Uptown. I do have a few questions and then a comment. Obviously, as reading it, parking was the first concern, and I'm, and you know, you addressed that by saying you'll be opening up that secure lot behind the diner. And it, and it, the way in your, in your presentation was a little confusing. It said you'll open up the 34. Is it up to 34 spots that are available in that lot? Is that how that is interpreted? You have 34 spots to open?
So, and we're already in the progress of transitioning those spaces. So, the secure parking lot was monthly paid parking by reservation. And upon conversation with Captain Harvey in the Police Department, we looked at the potential, the balance sheet of what that would look like and if it was doable. And parking enforcement was in favor of transitioning those spaces into metered parking at all times. So, all of those spaces would transition and are in the process of being transitioned into metered parking 24 hours, similar to any other parking space on street.
Got it. So, with that, with it, will, do the numbers then shake out as far as potential number of spots that could be taken for parklets? And then the number of spots that we have in the, in the secure lot to then compensate? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it actually exceeds the, the number. So, we identified 22 potential spaces, and that could be turned into extended, extended dining. And the 34, so we're, we're exceeding the, the balance sheet on, on that.
Okay. If you don't mind, is it, is it okay if I just go through all my questions, Member Kotzis?
Oh, please, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I, I was having a chat with Noah Tremblay, and Mayor is included on that. He was asking if this blocks the sidewalks, and he got confirmation that it does not block the sidewalks in any way. My other question was if we could see a full map, and it sounds like that, that'll come. Because the grid that we saw, it was difficult, not only to read, but to understand its relation to other things in the Uptown area. So, if we have, if we could get that, that'd be great. And then one, one more question, and then a comment. Each zone is limited to four, correct? Is that what you said, four spots?
Correct, a maximum of four spaces.
So, is that then business first, come first serve? Whoever signs up first gets it?
By application and review, yes.
Got it. And lastly, the Disability Commission would definitely like to take a look at this. And I know ADA was adjusted in the plan, and I was glad to see that. But I think they would, they'd very much like to give it a review and offer you feedback if there's any to, to be provided. Thank you.
Okay. Is there, is there anybody else on Council? I did want, I did have a couple of questions. One was, do we have, and I don't, I don't know if we've collected data at this point from our smart meters, are we kind of up or down what's been the parking trend here, kind of through this, through this, this new, new, new time?
So, as far as the information that, that I have seen, parking enforcement would be better informed to, to share the, the actual data, is that it has been, has been down as expected, considering how things have gone. I know the parking garage, for example, has, has been primarily Has, has been primarily empty for, for lack of better words during the day. And that's also attributed to things like municipal court that would typically be using that when they have a full docket and that's starting to come back online. We're seeing more vehicles in the Uptown area parking at metered parking. So the expectation would be that it would start to tick up, but for the last couple of months, it's been, it's been down, but that's not unexpected.
No, no, I would, I would, I would believe that would be correct. We probably have the numbers to prove that. And is it, is retail also considering this or is it just seem to be the outdoor dining seems to be the, the, the main driver? That, that people are really, the, the business owners are really interested in.
So the intention is not just for outdoor dining. That's the obvious short-term need. But as far as long-term building. Having that available for retail. And in general, if a, if a business were interested in. Or, or an organization even that is on the, the Uptown block. Wanted to create an outdoor space that is for artwork or beautification. You know, Athens in Bloom, for example, could transition into a miniature garden of sorts. So. The use is not limited to outdoor dining, but that is the, the near-term need from what we've been hearing.
Perfect. And, and Mr. Chicky and, and Mr. Logue, thank you so much for your, for your work on this. I know that this was a very collaborative effort. To, to pull this together pretty quickly. I know that in, in my conversations in business. It's not only necessary to try new things, but it's, it's also just, it is an opportunity to, to do that. So we're watching businesses. Really look at, try different things because this is, this is what we have to do in order to figure out. How to survive this, this, this short period and also figure out what, what the future is going to look like for, for business in general. So. I want to thank you for, for allowing businesses to have this, this opportunity to, to try some things.
Do you also have a couple, a couple more comments?
I see that, yes. I just looked up, I saw a member Reisner.
Yes. What's the cost of, to the restaurant owner for a permit?
As, as it's written right now, it's a $50 application fee and then a $100 permit. So it's much less than if. You were to rent out that parking spit, or use that parking space for regular parking, but it does offset. Some of the administrative costs of getting that arranged. The cost related to building. The, the structure would be up to the business and there's a lot of latitude there to design and create. We want it to be a creative process. The primary concern would be building of the platform and the transition to meet accessibility standards. Which I believe is within one-half inch of the curb. So we want to ensure that that is. That, that's on point when we, we go through that process.
Let me follow up on that. If. The restaurant, for whatever reason, goes, gets a permit and pays the fees and then does nothing but the space. What's the penalty for that?
As, as far as I know, there is no penalty for, for renting the space. It is revocable application. So if. It's determined, you know, there's no plan and there's no program, that can be rescinded.
Well, I think there should be something in there that says, hey, if you're not going to use it for whatever reason, you know, whether it's your fault, my fault or somebody's fault. We'll, we'll take it back within a week. You know, we'll give you a refund. Thank you very much. But obviously you're not going to use it for the purposes intended. So. I, I think there'd be some, some teeth there.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point on, and I don't think we'd really thought of that. We will, we can definitely look at that prior to coming back to council next week. One thought, my, my first thought is that until, once they've secured a permit. Until they've actually installed something, that's a parking space. And so it's a metered parking space and the public should be, should have access to that parking space. The property owner does not have the, we, we should make sure that the business owner cannot just cordon it off. Use it for their own private parking space for, for, for a staff member or for themselves. We need to just treat that as a parking space until they've deployed their. Their installation. At least that's my line of thought right now.
I think it's a good line.
And that kind of begs the question, and I don't know if this has been thought through at this point, but what would happen on that transition day? Would the city put out pylons or something to protect them as they were creating the parklet? Or would that be the responsibility of the business owners?
So there's a couple of things that, that happen in the creation of that space. So. On either end of the extended outdoor seating area would be parking blocks that would be put in by the city. And then on the corner would be. A flexible bollard to signal the, the corner. So that, that's something that would happen prior to the installation happening.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor?
I'm glad that the, the question came up about ADA accessibility because that's, that's critical for this to work correctly is to make sure. In particular with some of our sloped streets. I mean, I know the diagram that, that the city planner showed you where the city was crowned. So it was sloping into the curb and so you've got to shim it up. But clearly in the city of Athens, we've got. Streets that have, that are steep. And so we've got to make sure the ADA accessibility was steep. You know what I mean? There's a, there's certainly a grade to them. So we have to work through that. The other thing that I think is critical for this to work well. Is also free access for water to flow under to where if we have another day where we have four inches of rain come down. In the period of an hour and a half, we don't have several barges floating their way down towards the Hocking River. I am totally in favor of this, by the way. I have traveled. To conferences all over the US and it seems every city that I go to. Has this extended outdoor spaces or parklets. And they function very well. And I think in the, the time of COVID-19. Knowing that there's businesses that, that are really struggling with ODH's requirements when it comes to social distancing. Table spacing and the number of people that they can actually have indoors or outdoors that something like this. I think in the city of Athens can work very well.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you, everybody for such a, such a deep conversation and. And thank you for joining us tonight, Paul Logan, Andrew Chicky. That was, it's always great to, to see you.
Likewise. Thank you, council. Have a great committee, committee meeting. I'm going to have some dinner. Don't even have to drive home to do it.
Yeah. Okay. And so now we're moving into our, our second, second bullet point tonight, which is. Private tow away zone. This is looking for. Apps, Athens City Code. Point 05.3182. And this is. So basically. You never know what you're going to get. You're going to end up working on quite a bit when it comes to working on council. And for me, somehow it seems to be towing. In different fashions. So this one, this one coming forward is not about fees or anything like that. This is more about the location of the. Of the towing lots. And so currently right now, in the city of Athens and Athens City Code. It is written that these, these towing lots need to be within the city limits. I was, I was approached by attorney Sky Petty from John LaBelle and Associates. He has a client that is requesting a change to that, a towing operator that has a lot that's outside the city limits. And we wanted to have a discussion on that this evening. So. Just, just a little, a little bit about the, the towing regulations. When it comes to lots, they, they need accessibility and that's, that's written into Ohio Revised Code. Their location doesn't necessarily need to be within us, within the city limits. In fact, I believe they're on Ohio Revised Code, they, they request that it's. Within 25 miles of the municipality where the, where the tow occurs. This request isn't asking for as much, but we do have Sky Petty with us this evening to kind of continue and, and discuss this. This topic. So Sky, thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you, councilmen, and thank you to all the council members for including us on your agenda tonight. My clients are John and Deborah Melville and they own Athens Towing and Recovery Limited. It's one of just a small handful of towing operations that do toes for the city of Athens. And that's what this is about. Private toes from private lots are subject to statewide. Like you said, they can have, the, the lot can be 25 miles away. The ordinance that is involved here is 7.05.13 on the impounding of vehicles. And the sec, the, the, the one sentence that we're concerned about. Says that for city toes. The chief of police shall designate the place of storage of any motor vehicle found in violation of this ordinance. Meaning that they've violated a parking or traffic law that subjects them to being towed. And the, the key phrase here that was added apparently about 1998 or 99 was. Using impound lots within the city whenever possible. And of course, these vehicles that are being towed are generally in pretty poor condition. A lot of them have been in crashes. They've broken down on the street and stopped running. They're leaking. Some of them aren't. But my client tells me the vast majority of them are in pretty bad shape. And we have a city ordinance that essentially says you must keep those wrecked and leaking vehicles within city limits. And we certainly think there could be better uses of property within the city limits than. Potential environmental hazards and ice sores. And my client's lot is about 2.1 miles from. The city corporation limit sign on Columbus Road, there at the end of Columbus Road on 550. As you go out toward Amesville, just 2.1 miles out of town. And so it's not far. It is available by Athens On Demand Transit. It's, it's not on a standard route for Athens Transit, but you can do the $2 Athens On Demand. Ride out there. So it is accessible by public transportation. My client's been renting a lot in town on Columbus Road for almost 20 years. And has spent a lot of extra money there because they have an, their existing lot out on 550. That they could have been using, but for the eight words in that sentence that say using impound lots within the city whenever possible. So we're asking for an amendment to that ordinance. We don't have any particular favorite language or, you know, any, anything that pulls them within. You know, being able to tow cars to that lot on 550, we're okay with. The simplest amendment might just be eliminating those eight words, using impound lots within the city whenever possible. That would still leave the rest of that sentence, which leaves the chief of police to designate the place of storage of any. Vehicles that are towed from the city of Athens. So it's not like the city of Athens has no say anymore about where vehicles. Would go. The, the chief of police would still have the discretion to say. That lot's too far away. For whatever reason, we don't like that. That tow operation. They're doing something that we don't like and so we don't want to use them. Whatever it is, there's still going to be discretion there for the chief of police to do that. But other solutions that would work would be, you know, allowing lots within three miles of city limits. That would work for us. People have to go to the, the city police department before they go to the lot, before they can get their car out. Because you have to get a release from the city police before you can get your vehicle off the lot. And so another thought was. Do a radius from the city police department because that's really where people are traveling from when they're going to get their vehicles is the city police department. The, one of my client's competitors, AutoTech, is 4.3 miles away from the city police department. Athens Towing and Recovery's lot on 550 is 4.7 miles away from the city police, police department. So if you did a five-mile radius from city hall or the city police department. That would pull us in. That, we don't think this is going to be affecting anyone but my client. We don't, we're not aware of any other tow operations that are going to be adversely affected that are, or any that are going to be. Favorably effective that, that want to jump in and start doing toes in the city of Athens and all of a sudden are going to be able to do it because they have a lot. And then just one other issue that has kind of brought this to the fore for my client. Is that the lot that they have been renting on Columbus Road, the owner passed away. The estate is in probate and the lot is going to be sold. And it's up in the air whether they're going to be able to continue to use that lot at all. And so they may be looking around the city. If they can't use their existing lot on 550. They're going to be looking around the city of Athens to try and find a place to, to put an impound lot within city limits. And that would cost them a lot of money as having to rent this. Space in Athens has cost them a lot of money. Another point is this won't cost the city anything in income tax revenues because all these city toes. They're going to have to pay city income tax on even if they're towing it out of the city because they're originating it from the city. So the, the city isn't going to lose any income tax revenue if they change this ordinance. So that's it in a nutshell. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them. I have John Melville here in the room with me. So if you have questions for him. He's glad to answer questions too.
Okay, member Claude Felter.
Two things strike me about this. One, I'm all in favor of trying to save. Any space within the city that is already connected to utilities because I think those are going to become even more precious in the future. And I like the idea of doing infill construction instead of just spreading things out to the countryside. Because we don't want this to be a sprawling town. But if we do want to change this. Then I think that a five-mile radius sounds smart from the police department. But we, I don't know if we should do this or not, but I think it would be helpful for people if we could say. That the, the parking lots or whatever should be in places where they can get there on public transportation. Because we don't have really, I mean, the green cabs aren't working anymore. People might have a hard time going there. To get their cars. So it's good that your clients. Can get the public transportation there, but I think that would be important for the other towing companies too. So thank you very much, Mr. Petty.
Okay. Oh, member Crowell.
Thank you, Mr. Petty, for joining us today and bringing this to council's attention. I understand your client's concern. My only issue with some of what's been presented today is. Pushing our environmental problems out into the county. Of course, council is very concerned about municipal property and, and our regulations with inside the city. But I wouldn't want to say if we had a leaking car or something and we just tow it outside the city, then everything will be all right. So I do, do think we need to take into consideration that we don't want to just move the problems. Outside of our jurisdiction and then we don't have to worry about them. So that's my only concern. Thank you.
You know, and I will make mention, you know, this is, this is something that has been in place for, for 20 years. And I think that transportation has, has changed, you know, at this point, there's Uber, there's. There are other options to, to get to these, these places. You know, I believe that, that probably when this was written, they wanted to have it so that. People could, could access stuff within, within the city. And I just don't know if enough of the transportation has changed enough. But you know, I, I know that we, there was. But, you know, I know that we, there was a request put out today to Jesse Schmitzer, County Transportation Coordinator, to make sure that Athens Transit and that on-demand service would be, you know, viable, affordable, something that would allow, you know, retrieval of a vehicle, because of course, the last thing you would want is a pedestrian on, you know, on 550. But overall, I think it is a good time to look at this and try to see if there is time, if this is a time to tweak this. And Member Smedley.
Thank you, Member Katsis. I do think that last I heard, On Demand has expanded its customer base to all residents. Prior to that, it was just those with disabilities and senior citizens, so that would be available. Of course, there is a process, you got to schedule it ahead of time, but it is available. And we have Lyft now that wasn't available before, to your point. So the downside, I'm trying to understand if there's downsides to this, and that would be the only one that I can think of. Certainly, if anyone thinks of anything else other than what Member Crowell brought up, otherwise, it seems reasonable, but certainly something to think about. Thanks for presenting it.
And Member Fall.
Thank you. I think that we need to make sure that the accessibility issue is foremost, because a lot of the payments, other people who may have other, you know, that are having issues of being able to eat or get their car out and being able to access it in a cheap and easy way, I think is really important. I think that we put a mileage on it, what happens when hands-on demand, so that's an issue with us that we can do. Thanks.
Mayor Patterson, did you have a comment?
I have a question, and I don't know, Mr. Petty, if you can say approximately where on Columbus Road that property is. And here's why I'm asking, is, and I really respect what Sam had said about, you know, if you've got a vehicle that's leaking who knows what all over the place, you know, to drag it from one locale to another doesn't solve the leaky, you know, products coming out of that vehicle. But it's, my question is based on the proximity along Columbus Road to a wellhead protection area.
It's 136 Columbus Road. Is that the right address?
Yeah.
Russell Riverside. Russell's Riverside. That's where the lot is.
So it's very close to our wellhead. Thank you.
It's even in the name, Riverside.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Petty.
Yes, Mr. Petty, thank you, thank you. And so, yes, that'll, that's, well, that wraps up the second bullet point. But yes, Mr. Petty, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you all.
All right. Okay, and then I just have one last bullet point to discuss, and this one is easy, this is an LPA agreement with ODOT for some guardrail work that is coming up on US 33. I don't know if the project will happen this year. I believe it's being put out to bid in October of 2020, so I don't know if they'll try to sneak it in right at the end of the construction year or wait till spring. But once again, standard local let project language so that ODOT can do work in the city, and of course, this won't cost the city anything. Any questions on that? Of course not, that one's easy. With that, we are done with transportation. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Katsis. And we'll move on to finance and personnel, and that's chaired by Councilmember Crowell. The other members are council members, Rice, Mayor Katsis, and Smedley.
Thank you, President Isley. First item on our agenda tonight is appropriations and transfers, and we have under appropriations a number of amounts received in court, municipal court grants that I will be speaking to in the next item. But these are specifically $29,650 for one grant and $5,380 in a second grant, and these would be appropriations for the Court Fund 231, transaction code 500. Also, we have a transfer, and that is from the auditor's office. It is a $1,000 transfer from the general fund of the auditor, transaction code 300, to transaction code 500 for a desktop scanner. And that, excuse me, that previous, the two grants for the municipal court are to the Clerk of Court Computer Fund, 231, transaction code 500. Those are two items.
Excuse me, Sam?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but I have some comments on both those items you've mentioned. So one of the grant amounts for the 5,000 or 4,000, whatever it was, will go in transaction class 200 for tasers, and then the security setup with cameras, et cetera, will go in the 500s, as you mentioned.
Okay, sorry.
And then, and I tend to use this wording wrong myself, but for the auditor's office, it's not technically a transfer. We will be decreasing the appropriation in the TC 300s in our budget and increasing the 500s. So it's no new money, but it is actually an appropriation. One's an increase and one's a decrease type of thing. And so, like I said, no new money. That's for a desktop scanner. You may all remember when we asked for money to upgrade our software, and so we intend to provide more access to information for the people that use our software, for requisitions and purchase orders and things like that. So to do that, we will need to do instantaneous scanning into our system. So when somebody wants to go in from another department, wants to see how much money is left on a PO, or how much is spent, or whether they already have a PO for something, stuff like that. So for us to get that information to the system, we need to do the scanning. Otherwise, we have a really big scanner in a back room that it can be used also. But Tax also has desktop scanners so that we can post that information, you know, right away, and it'll be accessible to people. And I'm sure people like Debbie and anybody else who tries to follow their purchase orders and requisitions and things like that, they'll have a lot more access, and they can see what's been done on there. Okay?
Thank you for the clarification. Committee members, any questions or clarifications on these items? Yes, Member Smedley.
Kudos to the grant writer. Said that in our meeting the other day, but definitely well worth their investment in that time writing those grants. The tasers thing kind of threw me. This is just going to reveal my lack of understanding of the courts, but who typically uses those?
That's a very good question, Member Smedley, and we have a number of items on the agenda tonight, and the second one are these grants. And so I was going to get into the details, I wasn't sure if I should get into all the details under the, or I should wait toward the, for the grants, but I can tell you that the amount of $5,380, which the auditor clarified will be transaction code 200, which is specifically for tasers, is for the security staff within the courtroom. They have traditionally one officer and a bailiff who are unarmed, and they do have a panic button that they can use if they need in an emergency situation, and police officers arrive very quickly in those situations. But they would feel a little more comfortable having some non-lethal abilities to take care of a situation should an emergency arise, and that is why they wrote this grant for the Supreme Court of Ohio for tasers.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the committee or the rest of council? Administration? Okay, so we'll move on then to the court grants from the Ohio Supreme Court. And, Member Smedley, I agree entirely. Tanya Dye, the clerk of the County Municipal Court, has been doing a fantastic job to secure these grants. And a little more detail, the first grant, the larger grant, $29,650, was awarded to the municipal court for security. Both of these grants are in the, under security. And one, this larger one, is specifically to upgrade their camera systems. They have some bit antiquated door access systems that the keys can be reproduced, and so they want to upgrade those security systems. And Ms. Dye did a great job to get that, and then she also got the additional grant, as I just mentioned, for TASER unit for the court security staff. And those are from the Ohio Supreme Court. Any questions from the committee regarding the court grants? Other members of council care to share any information or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the prior year We have a bill in the amount of $5,317.50 that is a bill from the prior year, and that is to a company called EnerFusion Incorporated, and they have produced for the city some very nice, the mayor has showed us pictures of them, solar table canopies. Some people may have seen some of these devices. They're popular on college campuses, although Ohio University at this time does not have any. But that's a nice solar, sort of solar umbrella, and you can sit at a table and you can be out of the sun, but on top of the umbrella are solar panels, and you are able to charge your personal device in, you know, outlets that are near the top of the table. So it's simply a environmentally friendly way to get yourself a quick charge while you're out studying or having a cup of coffee or lunch. And I should note that this amount is reimbursable. The mayor's shaking his head, nodding his head, excuse me. We can get this amount reimbursed from NOPEC, the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council. So this is necessary to have this ordinance to pay a prior year bill, but we should have, we will submit a reimbursement for this as soon as we've paid the bill. Mayor, any, committee members, yes, Member Eisner?
Is this amount for the construction and design, or is it, what exactly are we paying the money for?
Mayor Patterson would like to answer then?
Absolutely. This is for the second half of what we have paid for this umbrella. We had to pay half, which we paid last year in 2019, and then we, upon delivery, we were to pay the other half of this, which, as was mentioned by Member Crowell, is that it's reimbursable through NOPEC's Energize Community Grant, which we have been successful in getting for a couple of years now, at least, with the solar lighting in the bus shelters, and now these solar umbrella charging stations. So we'll be reimbursed, actually, for twice that amount from NOPEC.
Yeah, we already paid 5,000 last year. We had to pay that down when we ordered them, and so, yeah, the full amount, I assume, will get reimbursed. But because they were ordered last year but didn't come, and we didn't get our final invoice until this year, it's a prior year expense. And if it's over, you know, by law, if it's over $3,000, council has to approve it. And so that's what this process is, and I just might throw out there, a lot of council members don't even realize, back in the day, we used to have a lot of these every January and February. People forgot to encumber money for bills that hadn't been, they hadn't gotten yet. And so we really hardly have any of them anymore. I think Debbie can attest to that, but anyway, so it's just one of those things, it's a bookkeeping thing, and so, and it won't really cost us any money in the end, so.
So great, if I could just be clear with mayor and auditor, so the reimbursement will not be the second half, the $5,137.50, it'll actually be double that. It'll be both payments, the first payment and the second payment?
I believe that to be true, to where with this granting mechanism, once you have shown, demonstrated your expense on what the project was, then NOPEC reimburses you. They did the same thing, like I said, with the bus shelters, that we had to show that we had purchased, and once we had those invoices, we were able to send them on to NOPEC, and NOPEC reimbursed us for those.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the committee or anyone else on council? Okay, moving on to our last item for finance and personnel tonight is our sewer note. We owe $460,000 for our sewer plant upgrades, and we, the auditor indicates that in July we will get the interest rate for the rollover of this loan as it rolls over into the next fiscal year. But the Service Safety Director and the Director of Engineering and Public Works recommend that we pay $200,000, pay down $200,000 of the $460,000 that is still due on this note. So that will be coming up to council next week. Member Fall, is you shaking, you raising your hand?
Sorry if I keep going in and out. What is the interest rate of it again, please? Well, currently, it's 1.67, but we don't know what it's going to be this time. Two years ago, when we incurred that loan, it was 1.45, I believe. And so the thing is, the bank, and I've mentioned this before, at least to the Finance Committee, that they don't like to guarantee an interest rate too far out, because it could change daily. And so because council won't be meeting in July, and, you know, we really can't do anything until the 1st of August. So they, towards the end of July, as Member Crowell said, you know, I'll call the bank, we'll get our interest rate, and ask our bond counsel to prepare the paperwork. And so when you first come back in August, then, you know, we'll be asking, I'll be asking you actually to suspend on second reading unless you have a special session or something in there, because it is due at the end of August. So for us to start it on Monday and then have it sit for a month, it is not really something that the bank is comfortable with, because that would end up sitting there for over two months before we actually took out the renewal amount and all that. So that's the plan. Council's okay with that.
President Isley?
I do have one question to balance, the, the unappropriated balance in the sewer fund. I know we'll transfer it over to the sewer debt fund to be able to make the payment out, but what's the balance?
Well, that, that's a good question because the unappropriated in the sewer fund is not healthy at all. But I believe this, what happens, the reason we get these kinds of, you know, 400, 500,000, 600,000, short-term or, you know, rollovers, is for the engineering and design because we can't get our grant money and everything together until we have the design and, and a cost. So we end up paying for that ourselves upfront. So, and mayor, maybe you can help with this, too. But my understanding from Jessica Dynas that, and Bob Hetty, is that we, they can roll this amount into the, the current cost now that the project, you know, has, has gone on. And so that this isn't really just coming out of our pocket. The money will be replaced from the project money. Does that make sense? The other side, the other thing I should tell you is, all of this money is already in our budget. So when you say, because we have to show the full expense of the note, and then for the revenue side, I don't know what that is until a decision is made on how much we're paying down. And so I show the full revenue as if we don't pay it down, or I guess, and, and bring it down, you know, like I might have brought it down 25,000 because that's what we paid last year. So it's already appropriated and in the rev, and estimated in the revenue. So it really doesn't affect the unappropriated balance. But it will certainly help on the other end of that, that if we get, can roll that amount over and get it, replace it within our budget. Does that make sense?
So auditor, thank you for that additional information. Noting that last year, we paid $25,000, and this year, we're, at least the recommendation is to pay $200,000. Can you, do you, do you have an idea of why the Service Safety Director and the Director of EPW decided on that amount?
I do not. I do not.
I don't believe they're with us tonight, but.
Yeah. I, I don't know if they knew that this could be rolled over into that amount last year. Maybe we were doing it at a last minute, and they just said, we'll put in kind of a minimum amount. I honestly don't know.
Mayor Patterson?
I can get you an answer, member Crowell.
Thank you very much.
It's, this is only, we, we took this out, you know, two years ago, so maybe they just played it safe last year, so now that we're really starting to move along, I don't know. Mayor will take care of that.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, President Isley, that is the end of finance and personnel.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Crowell. Next week, we'll be back to our regular session. We will have a slightly modified agenda on that, and that before we begin the regular session, we will have a committee meeting, a short committee meeting for planning and development, so that we can do our usual process that any legislation come for, coming forward, will have gone through the committee first. So thanks in advance, Councilmember Fall. And we'll see you all next week on the 15th at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
There's a comment from member Grace.
Oh, yeah. Okay. We, we may also have city safety, discussing that in the next couple of days, and we'll certainly get with our clerk of counsel if, if we need to have that discussion as well.
Member Grace, we lost you for an important, like, six words in there. Can you just?
I, I just wanted to say that, that we may also have a, a city and safety services committee meeting. There's something that, that member Claude Felter and I may want to bring to committee as, as well. But she and I will be working on that, and then we'll, we'll get with our clerk of counsel in, in the next day or two.
Well, that's mysterious. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we'll see you next week, and thanks for the comments, Councilmember Grace. Bye, everybody.
Bye.